Fernley City Council meeting to order June 4th, 2025. Hearing devices are, if you need a hearing device, Ms. Swanson up here will be able to set you up with that. To avoid meeting disruption, please place cell phones in silent mode, turn them off during the meeting. All meetings are recorded when addressing the council. Please sign in and state your name, speak clearly into the microphone. Line item one, 1.1 Pledge of Allegiance, and all need is in that. All right, thank you, roll call. 1.2 line item. Ward one, Councilman Hannan is present. Ward two, Councilwoman Zoberski is present. Ward three, Councilman Lal is present. Ward four, Councilman Torres is present. And ward five, Councilman Mendoza is present. 1.3 is public forum. This is a portion of the meeting devoted to the public. The public may comment on any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Items not included on this agenda cannot be acted upon other than to place them on a future agenda. If you wish to comment, you can do so in person at the meeting or raise your hand featured Zoom star nine if you're participating via phone. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Please void repetition. The mayor may at his discretion hold comments until the second public forum at the end of the meeting. Public comments submitted prior to 4:00 PM the day of the meeting will be provided to city council, but added to the record, but will not be read during the live meeting. Any public input received after 4:00 PM the day of the meeting will be included in the record, but may not reach council members before action is taken. Is there any public input at this time? Sir, if you want to make... Okay, is there anybody on Zoom? And nobody on the phone? Okay, thank you. We will now move to line item 1.4, looking for approval of the agenda. Councilman Lal?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Lal, seconded by Councilman Hannan. Please vote.
We tried to fix it, it didn't work, so we need a verbal.
Okay, Ward one?
Yes.
How do you vote? Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Line item two, consent agenda, looking for a motion on the consent agenda? Councilman, oops, Councilman Lal?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Lal, seconded by Councilman Hannan. Please vote. Oh, wait a minute, we have to do it manually. Councilman Hannan, ward one?
Yes.
Ward two, Councilwoman Zoberski. Ward three, Councilman Lal?
Yes.
Ward four, Councilman Torres?
Yes.
Ward five, Councilman Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Ms. Swanson, would you please read the business licenses?
Yes, sir. Tonight we have Franzen Hill Corp., general engineering contractor; Venture Construction Company, general contractor; Vasquez Property Improvements Handyman; Waterworks Plumbing, plumbing contractor; Rooted Realty Media, real estate photography; FDS Reno Pest Control Services; and Roper Buildings Nevada, residential and small commercial contractor.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. We'll now move on to line item three, reports. This is items for various public entity represented to provide general information to the council on public. No action will be taken. And Chief Deputy Brandingham, we'll go with him first.
Chief Deputy Mitch Brandingham, line kind of sheriff's office. Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, thank you for having me this evening. Lots of, lots of things going on around town. As always, the warm weather's here. We're starting to see things pick up with the carnival in town. And no real issues out there, but just a lot of folks out moving around kind of over the last couple of weekends. A couple of things I want to bring to your attention. As we have school closing out here, we have implemented a new scheduling system for our deputies to be out conducting traffic enforcement in the school zones. So we'll have dedicated traffic enforcement in our school zones around town during those, like, school zone enforcement hours. Kind of a new system that we're working through, but trying to get some of the traffic things knocked down and get, get to summer, get out of school as safely as possible without any, any major incidents or any more incidents than we've already had. They will be out issuing citations and things like that, so we are cautioning the public to please be following the laws and driving cautiously through those school zones. And we don't want to see people getting citations, but the deputies are certainly going to issue them if they see violations. We had interviews for a new evidence technician. Jack Heiser was our evidence tech for the last, probably close to 10 years. Jack had well over 30 years of service with the sheriff's office, going back to like 1989 or something like that. I think he started and retired as a full-time deputy. Came on as our evidence technician, and I would have brought him down and we would have given him some awards and stuff like that, but he turned his equipment in with us and got in a car and left the state and said, I'll see you guys later. Hopefully you don't need anything. So congratulations to him for such a long and strong career. He was, he was a good hand to have around. But with his departure from us, we conducted interviews today to get a new evidence technician. It seems like something that wouldn't really affect people in any way around town, but if they are looking to get property released, oftentimes that's who they're dealing with for safekeeping items, or if something is taken as evidence and they're trying to get it back. So as soon as we have that new person up and running, we'll get some contact information out to everybody to try and make that process as seamless as possible. And I, I think we, we had some good candidates come and interview this morning, so we should have somebody online soon. We have been working on the Fourth of July event coming up. We always like to increase staffing on the Fourth. And there's a handful of holidays throughout the year, but obviously the Fourth of July is one of the biggest ones up here in Fernley. Make sure we have plenty of people around for the parade, the park details, and then we're staffing a little bit extra with some canines and some supervisors and things like that into the evening. Make sure we have plenty of law enforcement services around and we get out of the holiday without any major incidents. We've been very fortunate the last few years where we see calls for service uptick a little bit, but we haven't really had anything significant occur on one of our holidays. So we're making sure that we're staffed appropriately and we're going to try and keep that street going and keep those things knocked down. We've had a couple of incidents out at the Desert Rose Lane up here in Fernley with the road being blocked and some things like that. And I know there were a bunch of questions like on social media and some things like that about what's going on. We did go out and conduct an investigation into that situation. And I know the city got all the, the road blockage removed and got that road back opened. One of the questions from the public is, what are we actually doing about that? We don't have the ability to write citation for what that violation actually is. The blockage of, of a public road is a misdemeanor offense. However, it doesn't exist in the ticket writing system. It's kind of an obscure law for that circumstance. So what we did is we took a criminal report. That report's going to be forwarded over to the city attorney's office so they can make a determination about whether they want to go forward with criminal charges in that situation. And then the last thing that I had is we got a couple complaints that came through regarding people starting to set up in camp back out on the BOR property over by the veteran cemetery. We have been doing active patrols out there. There's not currently anyone there. There were some guys that came through. They were there for maybe a couple days in a van. We got them moved down the road quickly. A little bit of garbage and stuff out there. I went and patrolled out there today and kind of took a look at what was going on. There's a little bit of garbage and stuff out there. Looked like maybe some high school parties or something like that and a broken down car. So we're working on getting the vehicle cleaned up out of there. We have some, some upcoming patrols with, with BLM that will be out in those areas trying to get some vehicles removed and stuff like that. So we're going to try and get that car out of there during that point in time. And then we're just doing some extra patrols through that area, making sure that nobody starts to get established over on that property. And if there are kids out there partying and drinking and leaving garbage and stuff like that out there, that we're checking on that throughout the night, particularly on the weekends and getting that stuff cleaned up. That's a report I have for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I kind of have a question. Did you, you said they're starting to set up camps over by the sand hole. Did you go over the hill to Sarasol Flats, what everybody calls Sarasol Flats?
So not today, I didn't know. I was out there following up on specific complaint, but...
Well, I just, what I was going to say is we were sighting in our rifles for granddaughter's aunt, and I noticed there was like three camps back there, back up, way back up on the hillside. It's kind of crazy, but...
Yeah, way, way back up there. You know, I, I worked kind of through the fall and the beginning of the year with the guys from Mark IV. They did a fantastic job out there. They brought in some private security patrols. They put signage up and we did some work getting some folks kind of moved off that property. We were working with those people on maps, trying to get them to places that were outside of the city. We gave them some locations like out east on, on 80 that are more feasible places for them to be. And then obviously all the resources out of Reno and some resources with the county. But a lot of them went straight north until they got off some of that Mark IV property up there into the, the hill up there. But we are currently monitoring that. And like I said, the guys from, from Mark IV have been fantastic with, with their response to that stuff and have gone really above and beyond to help us out with that project.
Councilman Hannan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, sir. I just want to thank you for all your hard work and keep Fernley safe. It's very much appreciated.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, no other questions. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Now I see Captain Silverberg is here from the North Lion Fire to give us an update on the fire district. It's good to have you here, sir.
Our responses for 2025. I believe you guys all have the packets that were handed out earlier this evening? Good. As we go through this packet together, I'll explain some of the details and have you guys have better understanding of some of the data. On the cover page, you'll see the, the ENFRS, that's the National Fire Reporting System. It's the system that we use for the incident coding and how we capture all of our data for the fire department and all fire industries. It's also the calls coding for the Fernley, Nevada. A few quick facts about the ENFRS that are important to note for the record in future. ENFRS has been the primary system for collecting the data since 1975. ENFRS is uploaded to both Nevada State Fire Marshal's Office and the U.S. Fire Administration. ENFRS has become outdated and no longer supports the needs for the U.S. Fire Administration, so moving to that, we've moved to a new system called the NERIS. We'll, as North Lion Fire, we're going to be using the new NERIS system that should be rolled out before the date of February 1st, 2026. On your packet, on page two, you should see the breakdown of our detailed incidents for the last month of May. We've responded to 348 calls for the month of May. That averages to about 11.23 calls a day. And give you a second to kind of look over that. As we move on, onto page three, in the incident count by the response zones last month, North Lion Fire is in the process of rezoning the district. In the near future, North Lion Fire will have five response zones that correlate appropriate response times and justification for the future stations that are Fernley continues to develop, the north and southwest plans. On page four is a detailed report of the aids given and received that we've received from our nearby fire stations and other fire departments and responding agencies. Note that North Lion Fire provided aid neighboring, to the neighboring agencies 10 times or once three point, I'm sorry, 10 times or once every 3.1 days per this month of May. Note that North Lion, we've called upon our fathering agencies 27 times. That leaves us calling them at least once a day, 1.1 times a day, which also correlates to having no service in the city as, as we're calling on them for the service. This data clearly shows that North Lion Fire is understaffed to respond to ever-growing demand of the service in Fernley. And that is our brief numbers for the month of May. Do we have any questions?
Councilwoman Zoberski?
Not really a question, but I'm super excited to have these numbers and thank you very much for coming and presenting.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was really good to have a report from the fire department. It's much appreciated where we can kind of see where things that you're facing as well and what the city's facing. So thank you so much for the report. Let's see, I don't see any other public entities, so normally we would go to the city manager and seems how I'm acting city manager at the moment. I will present a little update to council on a few things. First of all, that the CRRC project is on time and on budget and it's going really well. We've picked out an area where the Boys and Girls Club will be putting playground equipment, and it's going to be on the west end of the event lawn. And then also we're looking at, I have them checking into putting sage, shade structures up. For some reason, those shade structures were pulled off the plans, so I have them looking at what it would cost to get those installed. And also a removable stage to where it would go on the west end of the event lawn in case we want to have a band or any kind of a ceremony where they do recitals or whatever. We'll be able to roll out the stage and they'll be able to perform there on a stage on, on the west side. That concrete's about 30 feet wide, so it'd be plenty of room to put a stage to do such I also, this is really good news. So I received this yesterday morning. This is from Mary Fitz from BLM, and her email reads, "Good morning. Good news. The patent for phase one parcels one through eight was mailed out to the city today from the Nevada State Office. It should arrive by the end of this week or early next week. Please let me know when you receive it." And this is from Sidra Raich Shaw. It says, "This is a great milestone of achievement. I'm excited for the city's accomplishments and receiving the patent for parcels one through eight. Congratulations and thank you, Mary, for leading BLN efforts on this milestone." So our Lansville, 2013 Lansville is finally completed. So that is real good news. Also, just to speak a little bit about, let me see where my papers are here. I have a paper here showing all the, the positions that have been filled, the positions that are open and the order in which council wanted to have those received. So, so the first one I want to say is Cordell Sloan in Utilities Department Electrician was hired full-time on 4-3. Braylin Burkle, Administrative Assistant, Phase Specialist Two, replaced Debbie Skinner on 4-9. Alyssa Jhonison, Planning Senior Planner, was hired on 4-28. And Trenton Pollock, Utilities Department Maintenance Worker, seasonal, was hired on 4-28. Susanna Robinson, Municipal Court Clerk, is seasonal, as she was hired on 4-30. Tricia Burke, Utility Building Administrative Specialist One, was hired on 5-5. Hayden Santos, Public Works Season Maintenance Helper, is now working. And then Glenn Church, Utilities Department for the SCADA Specialist, was hired full-time on 6-2. Benjen Perito, Engineering Project Manager, is replacing Kerry Wetzel, was hired and will be here on 6-9. And then to be announced is Utility Engineer Manager, which was approved by council by passing the budget. So this is a list of new positions to be posted internally and externally effective 7-1 2025. That is a Maintenance Worker One for Streets, Maintenance Worker One for Parks, Maintenance Worker One for Facilities, Associate Planner. These are all full-time positions. And then a list of new positions on hold is Code Enforcement. This is non-post pending the determination of council, coding per council. So Councilman Torres, I'm not really sure if you wanted to get with the judge and that so that we can get the codes and stuff rolling so that we can put that out as well. And then also Code Enforcement Officer, non-post. This is pending, once again, the, the code, redoing the code. And this position will be hired, if I understand the motion correctly, was to be hired six months after the, the Code Enforcement Manager is in place. So until he gets his, how he wants to get it set up, we will hire his help six months later. Utility Department, Utility Engineering One and Utility Engineering Two, these are pending council's approval at a January meeting. So six months after the Utility Department Engineering Manager is hired, then that will, then these positions will be waiting approval for council to hire those positions. I'm sorry, so the replacement was not Debbie Skinner, the replacement was Reba Skinner. Sorry about that. And that was for, let me see where we at? That was for City Clerk Administrative Specialist Two. So, let's see. So I guess the only other thing I want to talk about is our C, RC. I've been in contact with Mike Worm from Boys and Girls Club of Truckee Meadows, Reno. This project is on time, so Councilwoman Zoberski, I don't know if you have set up your committee and have discussed anything, but we really need to push this, get rolling on this because this is on time. There's a lot of things that's going to go into this, like, Mike Worm is going to send me what they had originally discussed on who's paying for what. And, but we really need to sit down and, and try to get this rolling as quick as possible and maybe, so if we don't get, if we don't get some type of agreement, I will have city treasurer, Mr. Carson, kind of explain where, where we are and what will happen if this, if this agreement isn't handled before it opens and it's ready to go.
So we, can I talk?
Yes, go ahead.
I have the committee completely put together and we all decided on a date, so it's really just getting with different, the different city staff members to make sure that date works for them and so that we can have a meeting and get it rolling.
Okay, and then also is that including Mike Worm and his staff as well?
Yes.
Okay. Awesome. So I will have Mr. Carson now kind of go over what we're looking at if the, if the, if the agreement isn't signed or whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Robert Carson, city treasurer for the record. So when we take possession of the building after construction is complete and it'll be vacant, all of the utility bills and operating costs with the budget this year, we approved in the transient lodging tax fund, right around $330,000 to accommodate that until we can get an agreement with the Boys and Girls Club. So all those costs are already budgeted for and accounted for, so we're good to go.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Torres.
How close are we to getting that lease finalized?
Well, that, that's what I was saying. I just, I just spoke with Mike, Mike Worm today. He's sending me the agreement, the previous agreement that was passed out, and we're going to look at it and I will be in contact with him tomorrow as well as Aaron. And what we're trying to decide is, so this has got to go in front of lawyers, right? To make sure everything kosher and then we'll go from there. So as soon as I, as soon as I hear something or we have something that's concrete and signed, I will make sure to let all council members know what it is. Councilman Mendoza?
Is this something that needs to come back for a vote? Aaron Morton, city attorney, when we do have a finalized agreement, we'll come back for a vote for council to approve.
Yeah, it, it definitely have to come back because it has to deal with the money situation.
Okay, thank you.
And let's see, oh, one other thing that I wanted to point out is that All Points Grill grand opening is Friday, starting at 10:00 AM would be the ribbon cutting. So I invite everybody to come out for that. And from what I understand, they have excellent food. It was excellent food at the little shop, but it's even, even just as good here at the All Points new building. And that, once again, will be Friday at 10:00 AM. And I understand they're going to have specials and stuff throughout the whole weekend, so that should be a good time right there. Okay. I think... Yeah, okay, so let's go ahead. That's kind of my report as city manager and the mayor. And so I will go ahead and go with Councilman Hannan. Are you ready to go?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing at this time.
Councilwoman Zoberski?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Councilman Lal?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I spoke with ANK's superintendent, Ryan Hank Carey, and he says that on Monday and Tuesday, they will be paving the rest of Shadow Lane, and we will have a new road, not a highway, a new road going 25 miles an hour in Fernley. And I want to thank the staff for getting that accomplished because you helped me get elected. Thank you.
Councilman Torres?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The FCTA Board will review the 10 grant applications submitted for fiscal year 2526, round one, which is July through December of 2025, and make grant selections during the Monday, June 9th FCTA Board meeting, which starts here at 6:00 PM. I also want to...
I believe that, I believe the meeting is at 5:30. It is what my, what my thing says, 5:30.
So the, the special council meeting, which is to decide on, we have additional funds this year, so the special meeting at 5:30 for council is to make that decision on where the, that additional money is going to go, and then the FCTA Board meeting is at 6:00 after our special meeting.
Right. You're exactly correct. I just, 5:30 if they wanted to be here for the, to see the additional funds.
And then the only other thing I had is, I didn't want to spend a whole lot of time on it, but on 2.9, and it's the MOU between Main Street Fernley and the city of Fernley, a lot of people don't understand what the Main Street project is. If you want to see a very successful Main Street project, go to Gardenville. The city down there has done an amazing job. It's a private and public entity partnership. So although the city of Fernley is part of the project, the government entity has to be on board in order to receive the majority of the funding for the private sector, which is Main Street USA, here is Main Street Fernley. So it's a very positive thing. It's a great project. Tonopah has done very well as, theirs is pretty amazing. I'm hoping... I'm hoping because we have a very unique um artist in Jim Moffett here and he does have um he does have some of his work in Gardenville as well as in Tonopah and both places just rave about what he's done for them. So I'm hoping to see a little bit more on our Main Street. Um, but please be patient. It takes a lot of work. Um, I have full faith in our Main Street USA here in Fernley. And again, it's uh it's a private private public entity partnership. So you may come to Fernley and ask if you have an issue or whatever, but don't be surprised if we actually direct you back to the private entity um and their board and commission because they're the ones making decisions. It's not a council thing. It's not a special committee thing on behalf of the city. If it's good, come to us and tell us that. If it's bad, go see Lowell and Shannon um and put it on them. So thank you guys very much.
Councilman Mendoza?
Yeah, I had a question about the shadow project. Um, a few people came to me and I'm not sure who to speak to about it, but asked why wasn't there curb sidewalk and gutters put in at the last part of shadow if we were redoing the streets? And I'm just trying to find an explanation for that if anybody could give it to me.
Uh, that would be directed at Ms. Briar?
Ariapas Fernandez, City Engineer. Um, we can talk offline and I can explain the design of the project to you or to your constituents if you would like.
Absolutely. Thank you. Also, uh, I'll be attempting to make the meetings on the ninth and the eighteenth. I'll be traveling the ninth. Um, I'm hoping to be able to zoom in on those meetings for that and then I'll be out of town on the eighteenth. Um, so I'll I'll put that in the calendar for everybody to know and I'll be back at the end of the month.
All right. Thank you. So um let's see, we are on three point two. Uh, is uh Mindy on the uh phone? I'll work, go ahead.
Uh, so our lobbyist, uh, I spoke to her today and um as everybody knows or hopefully knows, session ended uh at one AM Monday night, Tuesday morning. Um, there are a lot of things for Fernley that we opposed. Um, that we were able to stop and there were a lot of things for Fernley that we supported that we were able to get through. Um, so those are all good things. We have we have one small rail bill that will probably come back um either during interim or special session. Um, she is going to call in on the eighteenth and give a very in-depth report. She's probably actually going to be here. Um, she just was trying to catch up finalizing things um after Monday, Tuesday-ish, so she just wanted me to just pass that on. She will be here on the eighteenth. Thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor asked me, we had a we had a bill, the city of Fernley's bill was SB seventy. Um, it was requesting money for to continue expanding for phase two and three of the community center, CRRC. Um, as everybody knows, this year's overall state budget was upside down. Um, so it didn't even make it to finance committee. Um, I was afraid that was going to happen. I was hoping we originally asked for fifteen million. I was hoping to get at least five. Um, but there were there were major there were major departments and major things that didn't that weren't funded this year. So our wish list, um, it didn't even make it to finance. So we'll just keep trying. Sorry.
Thank you, Councilman Torres. So let's go to line item four, Proclamations. There are none. Go to uh line item five, Presentations, five point one uh for possible action and discussion to accept renewal proposal from Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool and approve a payment of three hundred and eighty eight thousand twenty nine dollars and seventeen cents with a deductible of two thousand dollars per claim for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six funds. And um is is Tina here to present? Oh, there she is. Okay.
Sorry, I'm sitting in pain, you know, a taller fellow in the front. Uh, good evening, Council Mayor Tina Peterson for the record with LP Insurance.
And Stephen Romero with Pool Pact.
So we are here once again. The funnest part of your evening is discussing insurance. I know you guys are all so super excited. Um, so I'm just going to kind of go through this briefly as I think everybody on the council, maybe not Joe. Um, we have gone through how the insurance pool works, what the coverages are. This year, there was absolutely no change to the coverage forms. So page one, all of these coverages have remained in place as long as you've been with the pool. I have explained before, the pool doesn't take away coverages, they give you coverages. So if you want to turn to page, I think it's five. It's the page that has the bar graph.
I think it's page nine, which are aren't any page numbers, but.
So I noticed that, so I'll change that for next. Go around.
You might want to speak up a little bit. I have my hearing aids on, but I didn't hear much of that.
Really? You can't hear me? Oh, that's better. It's kind of a shocker. Sorry, guys. Um, so did you all find the the graph? So every year we like to do like a side by side comparison. So this year we like to show you what you had allocated for twenty twenty four versus twenty twenty five's exposure. If you can see on the payroll line, we did have an increase of eight point one six percent. The total insured value went from sixty eight million to eighty million. So quite a big jump in as far as the insured value. So that was a sixteen point eight percent increase. Your auto count went from sixty seven to seventy four, another ten point four five percent increase. So if you see your program cost from three hundred and forty two thousand to three hundred and eighty eight thousand this year, your actual increase was only thirteen point three one percent, which means everything that was increased was all based on exposure. All of the markets stayed pretty flat to around a three percent. Three percent increase was the average this year, so that is phenomenal in this market and it's because of how Pool Pact picks out their delegates, they go to Lloyds of London and they really do their best to give you the best quality product for as little as they can. I know Stephen always has something to share.
Yeah, I'll just share a little bit and a thank you for uh having us here this evening and also I want to thank you and and the mayor for um being a participant of the pool and being very strong with being participating in in the different sessions and trainings that we end up having. So whether it be in our HR department, using our HR services or using uh Marshall and Jared out of our Risk Management Department. And then also the other trainings, which would be your board trainings uh that Alan Colton and Wayne Carlson put on. Uh, so again, thank you very much for doing that. Uh, you know, if you have any questions, I'm gonna I'm just going to open it up to questions and be able to answer anything that you may have at this time.
Councilwoman Zoberski?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, the auto count on our um exposures, that's um for all of the news, the new vehicles that we added into our budget as well. Does that include like our drone, any of like the heavy equipment? Is that is that included in this as far as auto count?
It is not. It is one hundred percent strictly auto count. And it is actually also removing trailers. So we only look at at actual vehicles that would be licensed on the road.
Okay. Only in this brief snapshot, but we have, when we go and do our renewal, we have all the statement of values, which is all of the buildings. We have all of the equipment listed. So we have all of that information. These are just the things that kind of drive um what the premium looks like. The equipment, when you add that, it is all part of that. But like I said, that's adding exposure. You don't really see a big, huge difference when you add the equipment versus like vehicles or buildings. Speaking of buildings, when that new one comes on to the city, um, don't forget to call your insurance agent that nobody thinks about because it will be a vacant building. Um, so just a little tickler for whoever's listening. Um, so we need to know about those things when they happen, but yes, we have all the equipment and everything listed.
Okay, so the the twenty twenty five, the seventy four auto count, that's with the new vehicles that we added into our budget. So sometimes that happens to where like we those vehicles won't be available and then we'll have to push them over to the next to the next year, to the next budget or something like that. So are we being charged for that as far as exposure goes if we don't actually get that those vehicles or like get that equipment in our fleet?
So the applications, the applications are are submitted and and completed December and January.
Okay.
Uh, at that point in time, whatever is on that on that vehicle list, that's what you use to build that number. So if you add a vehicle like today, you're not going to be charged for it until next year.
Okay. I think that's all my questions for right now. If not, I'll call you. You know where to find me.
Councilman Mendoza?
Yep. Thank you guys for presenting. Uh, the question I have is probably for City Attorney. Um, with the amount that is going to cost us for the annual uh purchase of this insurance, is this something that should have been put to three proposals or have that request out there for other agencies to submit?
Aaron Morton, City Attorney, uh, no, not in this case because Pool Works, the state of Nevada, it's not required that we go out to out to bid.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Torres?
Uh, if there's no other questions, I'm ready for a motion if so needed.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, I motion to accept the renewal proposal from Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool and approve for payment of three hundred and eighty eight thousand twenty nine dollars and seventeen cents with a deductible of two thousand per claim from fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six funds. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Hannan. Please vote. Ward one, Councilman Hannan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ward two, Councilwoman Zoberski?
Yes.
Ward three, Councilman Lau?
Yes.
Ward four, Councilman Torres?
Yes.
And Ward five, Councilman Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now move on to six point one. This is first reading in consideration of Bill three sixty, the general ordinance adoption of twenty twenty four International Code Council ICC series, the twenty twenty three National Electric Code and the twenty twenty four Northern Nevada Chapter of the International Code Council Amendments, which will amend the city of Fernley Municipal Code Title Eight, Chapter Two, Buildings and Building Regulations and Building and Construction. Ms. Perkel?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. As the mayor just read, this is just a first reading. Um, I will, I am prepared to come back with a presentation at our next council meeting um to explain some of the processes with this, but for tonight it is just a first reading. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Does Council have uh Councilwoman Zoberski?
I'm just out of curiosity, are any of the um are any of like the international codes um different in like very rural communities opposed to like bigger cities or is it everybody's adopting it altogether?
Um, in Nevada, everybody is adopting it altogether. Now, there are states that have their own building codes. California actually has a California Building Code Series. Um, Oregon, I believe, has their own. But in Nevada, it's um the International Building Code Series that gets adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. We'll now move on to line item seven, Resolutions. Um, seven point one, Discussion Possible Action to Adopt Resolution twenty five dash zero zero seven. Accepting the public improvements, roadways, water, sewer and storm drain infrastructure for the Fernley Five Ranch Village Two project. And Mr. Lopez.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and good evening, Council. Uh, Alex Lopez Martinez, Project Manager for the record. Uh, here to uh present Resolution uh number twenty five dash zero zero seven for the acceptance of the roadway and utility infrastructure as part of the Friendly Five Ranch Village Two project. Um, so just a little bit of background. The uh Engineering Department issued a notice of completion on February seventh for the improvements done under Village Two of the Friendly Five subdivision. Um, with those improvements, uh, and we have a visual up just to uh help uh provide a little bit more clarity. Um, the light blue is Village Two and um that is the subject of this resolution. Uh, with Village Two, we introduced three new roads, uh, which is Carson Way, Darcy Lane and Maeve Way, as well as uh concluded the uh construction of Eleanor Way and Peyton Way. Those were from Village One. Um, uh, NRS two seventy eight dot three three nine zero requires that the local governing body accept the um road right away um to our city network of roads and that's what I'm here to present today.
Do we have council have any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion. Councilman Lau?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve Resolution number twenty five dash zero zero seven to accept the roadway, water, sewer and storm drain public infrastructure improvements for Friendly Five Ranch Village Two.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Lau, seconded by Councilman Hannan. Ward one, Councilman Hannan, how do you vote? Ward two, Councilwoman Zoberski?
Yes.
Ward three, Councilman Lau?
Yes.
Ward four, Councilman Torres?
Yes.
And Ward five, Councilman Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
I have a question. I got a question. I have a question.
Um, Alex, we have a question.
Yeah, one simple question. I noticed the names of the the streets. Were they all Beatles songs?
No, that would be pretty interesting, but uh from my understanding is the the roads are named after the children of the uh developer um or um family members.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to line item seven point two, Discussion Possible Actions or Approve Resolution twenty five dash zero zero five to implement city of Fernley Special Assessment District Guidelines for private property owners. And Ms. Altek, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Lydia Altek, Deputy City Manager. I know we've had a lot of discussions on this, so I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, but I did uh write out some talking points, bullet points, so that um just give you an overview of what special assessment districts are and then take questions at the end. So uh, a special assessment district is a broad financing tool that counties, municipalities and towns in Nevada can utilize to fund a variety of infrastructure and improvement projects such as streets, street lighting, utilities, curb gutter and sidewalks. Once negotiated with the private property owner, special assessment districts are formalized through a process that includes public hearings, protest opportunities and the adoption of an ordinance by the city council. Property assessments or fees are levied on property owners within the district who benefit from the improvements. Assessments are based on each property's proportional benefit from the improvements. SAD or Special Assessment District funding is not part of general property taxes, but it's a separate additional, as I said, fee only for properties within the district. Once the cost of the project is determined, it is financed through the issuance of bonds that are financed for a determined number of years and paid back using uh annually collected assessments of each parcel of land within the special assessment district. It's a financial financing tool that protects a municipality's general fund. The city has no liability in these bond bond issuances. The special assessments become a lien on the property and failure to pay can result in legal actions, including foreclosure. The process for a property, for private property owners to petition a request for a special assessment district. Is outlined in the Special Assessment District Guidelines presented today through this resolution. The property owner must demonstrate to the satisfaction of the city. That there are no significant financial risks to the city issuing the bonds. The private, the property owner is responsible for all the costs of the project prior to the time bonds are issued. Including the costs of consulting engineers, assessment engineers. Project management engineers, underwriters, the city's financial consultant. The city bond council, the city's direct staff time set by an hourly rate or formula. The cost of preparing the appraisal, uh, the absorption study if needed. The environmental review and other matters. And at this time, I'll take any questions you have.
Councilment Torres.
Uh. Ms. Altic, thank you so much for all the work that you put into it, along with all of staff. Um, Mr. Carson, I know this is a task too. It's something that's been talked about since we became a city and I'm glad we're finally here to get it done. Um. The only question that I have is we're still working on impact fees. Getting that codified in the same way.
So the impact fees are different. Um, we're still. In the process of putting together a study on impact fees. So what that requires is a revamp of our capital improvement project list. So that's in the works. It's not complete yet.
Okay, and I I wasn't expecting, I know budgets and on and on and on and on. So I just want to make sure that we're still making progress on that. This is awesome. So thank you. Thank you guys for doing this.
Councilman Hannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to echo the sentiments of Councilment Torres. Uh, this has been long coming. And the folks here keep telling us that they want development to pay for itself and they don't want to. Be stuck with the burden of paying for things that um that happened after they came here, so on and so forth. So um, I want to thank you and staff for that. Um, we're super excited about this. Uh, if there was nothing else, I'm ready to make a motion. Do you have something?
I think I have a question.
I'll let her, I'll yield to Councilwoman Zaburski.
Councilwoman Zaburski, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Um, I'm super excited about this as well. I think just um trying to wrap my non-super government head around it. So um property requested, special assessment district, property owner requested. So like the. The developers are gonna come to us and request the money. This is not like something that we're levying on people. Um, you know, we have a new development that comes in and we say, actually, we're gonna go ahead and put the special assessment district on you so that it can help out with services in the city of Fernley. Because I'm just trying to picture why every time I hear special assessment district or fee, then I just hear tax. And I'm like, why, why aren't we saying that? Or why is this so much different than that when it's? A fee being imposed. So. I think that that part of of this property owner requested special assessment, will there be a time in the future where the city says? This is an area we would like to put a special assessment or this is an area that might need this kind of district. Because it's so behind in improvements or something like that.
Yes, there could be, and that's a different pro uh process and that's a provisional request that would come from the city and it would require financial. Um, impact analysis to see if that pans out, if it really does produce income. Um, and economic viability. But this process is just for private property owner requested.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, uh, Councilman.
Do you want to let Mr. Hannon go? I'll I'll second his.
Okay, uh, Councilman Hannon, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Um, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to adopt twenty five dash zero zero five. Formalizing the creation of guidelines and procedures of property owners requesting special assessment districts in the city of Fernley.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilman Hannon, seconded by Councilment Torres and we'll take a vote. Ward one, Councilman Hannon.
Yes.
Ward two, Councilwoman Zaburski.
Yes.
Ward three, Councilman Lau.
Yes.
Ward four, Councilment Torres.
Yes.
Ward five, Councilman Mendoza.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. So line item eight, public hearing. Um, this is um going to be tabled until our next meeting. Um, but it actually is a public hearing, so I have to open it up for public discussion. Uh, and it's um. Ms. Rambo, do you want to go ahead and?
I just give some context if I can. Um, Michelle Rambo, Planning Director for the record. Um, I was very excited to have this for you tonight, um, because we worked really hard on it. But we had a little noticing snafu, so we had to renotice it again for the June eighteenth meeting, which is why we need to uh continue it to that date. Um, but as the mayor said, it is a public hearing, so um if there's anybody in the audience that would like to provide comment tonight, they can do so.
Councilwoman Zaburski?
What was the noticing?
We had a couple that didn't go out, so we had to redo it, make sure that they all went out.
Is this what was circulating about like people getting empty envelopes? Thank you.
So if there's no other comments from um, this council opened up for public for any input that the public has.
I think I pressed, oh, there we go. It's already on. Thank you. Mayor, City Council, uh, staff, audience. My name is Clayton Trapp and I'm here on behalf of a uh property owner within the proposed Southwest. Uh, area plan. The uh, the parcel is parcel number zero two zero two seven two zero one located at Sage and and um alternate ninety five. Um, I, on behalf of my uh client, would like to express concerns regarding the proposed Southwest area plan. And its potential impact on my client's property. Just for a little background, the property has been owned by my client since uh two thousand and seven. The owner has paid annual property taxes uh this year of about five hundred and fifty, but for all those years, they paid property taxes. In two thousand and eight, the client invested in a zone map amendment process successfully achieves achieving a commercial zoning designation. Consistent with the city's prior planning vision. Since then, the property has been held with the intent to market and or develop for commercial uses. The current concern by uh by the client is that the proposed SWA shifts the land use designation for this parcel. Which impedes their desired use. Such a change would directly undermine the property's current commercial zoning and marketability. Prospective buyers and or developers will be discouraged by this inconsistency and devalue the property. Moreover, my client would face the undue burden of repeating the zone map amendment process to restore commercial. Alignment despite the valid two thousand and eight approval. Uh, legal and fiscal considerations under Nevada Revised Statutes, NRS Chapter two seven eight, specifically. Two seven eight, three, four, nine and related provisions, the city is obligated to consider. Uh, existing zoning entitlements, property owner reliance on prior approvals. Economic impacts and potential undue hardship. My client has relied in good uh. In good faith on the commercial zoning for seventeen plus years. A land use change at this time would create substantial and necessary hardship. Diminishing both property value and the ability to sell or develop the site. Uh, in conclusion, I respectfully request that the city maintain a land use designation on this particular parcel. To be consistent with property's existing zoning.
Sir, your your time is up and like I say, thi- this will be brought back on the eighteenth if you want to continue.
And I and I apologize, but my my client wanted to have it read into the record.
There you go. That's good.
Tonight.
We got it.
Okay, so thank you. I really appreciate.
So, uh, Mr. Mortensen, do we have, do we need to have a vote to table this until the next and bring it back on the uh next meeting? Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman Hannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, since this is public comment, um, I was wondering if um Ms. Rambo. Um, could answer uh sort of the question about zoning and 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 the designation of land use. And how that um, how that works. So I think there might have been some confusion there and just for clarification purposes, so that they can come back um at the next meeting and and. Can you speak, can you speak to that, please?
Yes, um, Michelle Rambo, Planning Director for the record. Uh, the set, the plan does not change the underlying zoning, so they still have commercial zoning on that property. Um, when we get um a development, uh, um, sorry, development application. We will take that into consideration. Um, and we can always adjust the map, the land use plan um accordingly if we need to. Um, that's the same answer we've given a lot of other people that have had the same question is that it does not change the zoning. Doesn't impact the underlying availability of that zoning. Um, it's just um. Kind of an overlay that we can adjust later on if we need to.
Thank you, Ms. Rambo.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Lau.
I wanted to make a motion.
Okay, uh, if there's no other, uh, okay, go ahead, Councilman Lau.
I'd like to make a motion to table item eight point one.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Lau, seconded by Councilman Hannon, and we will take a vote.
Do we need to specify when we're bringing it back?
This will be brought back at our next meeting on the eighteenth.
I vote yes.
Uh, Ward two, Councilwoman Zaburski.
Sorry, is there any, is there any way that we can push it to the um beginning of July's meeting? Because I won't be here either on the eighteenth and I would really like to be here for this item.
We already sent out the public hearing notices for the eighteenth.
Okay, thank you.
So how do you vote?
Um, I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ward three, Councilman Lau.
Yes.
Ward four, Councilment Torres.
Yes.
Ward five, Councilman Mendoza.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Line item mine, but in public forum, this portion of the meeting, you voted to the public. If you wish to comment, you can do so. In person at the meeting or raise your hand featured in Zoom, starting if you're participating, but. Uh, public comments are limited to three minutes. Please avoid repetition. Is there any public input at this time? Ms. Swanson, is there anybody on Zoom? And nobody on the phone. Okay, so our next meeting will be June ninth at five thirty for a special meeting to allocate funds from the TLT budget. And then afterwards, there will be an allocation meeting um at six o'clock. So um. And then after that, our next meeting, our regular meeting will be June eighteenth at five PM. This meeting is adjourned.